This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the Sampson City Council for Wednesday, for the evening Wednesday, August 7th. The media tonight is being recorded and broadcast by Inmedia on Chatter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage is sampsonmedia.org. Councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended on the March 25, 2025, which allow us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remote remain mute under recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the direction of the view on as you are participating in the public speak time for the public hearing. Now, this meeting is now holding order.
Connie Denham?
Here.
Salem Derby? Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kuzinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Here.
Tamara Smith?
Here.
JT Tyrell?
Here.
Owen Zerrin?
Now is the time for the press statements and a moment silence. Press statement.
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will take the moment, I will take the minutes first. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of June 25th, July 10th, and July 15th.
Tom Luke?
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to approve the minutes of June 25th, July 10th, and July 15th. Any further discussion? Say none, Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem, Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Upstate.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
JT Tyrell?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now is the time for the swearing of the two new firefighters. I will say it once again, thank you Chief Norris for using this platform and this body to swearing the new firefighters. It's a way for the community to know them, to know the hard work the fire departments are doing, and we always welcome you guys with open arms.
Thank you, Mr. City Council President, City Council, and certainly Mayor LaChapelle. So tonight, we're here to swear in two new firefighters. And just as a quick kind of overview of why we're here tonight. Back last fall, the Fire Department applied for and received the federal grant for $1.5 million for a safer grant for hiring four new firefighters based on the call volume that has seen an increase over the last three to four years. That federal grant pays for the full salaries and benefits for the first three years of those four individuals. We've hired one of those four positions already, and then tonight, we're bringing forward the second and third positions for that safer grant. And then we have interviews this coming Tuesday to fill that fourth position and entry down as well. So that's kind of what we're bringing for you before you're here tonight. The two firefighters, I'd actually have them come forward for a moment here. We have Danny Maum and Rosanna Lakis. What you'll see in a moment here when the mayor, when the mayor swears both these individuals in, is we've refined our hiring process over the years, and we've really focused on looking at individuals who are gonna have a career here for City of East Hampton for 30 years, and looking at the quality and such, what good people they are. And that's what we're bringing for you tonight. We're bringing before you two exceptional individuals that happen to be firefighters and EMT and paramedics. Rosie, Rosanna Lakis has background in both fire, attended the career of Fire Academy already, and has been a paramedic for a number of years. And then Danny Maum also has experience already in the fire service and the county fire program, as well as completing his basic EMT program, and will be attending the paramedic school this coming fall. So we have some exceptional people that we're swearing in here tonight, and extremely proud to bring them on our organization, and looking forward to working with them for the next few years.
So, thank you. Mayor?
Mayor?
You can be there.
Okay.
As you know, there's a camera over there, so they can look that way.
I'm looking this way? Do they, do they have to be so far away?
No, they can be close. And they should be close.
Okay. Okay, it's your ma- I know better than to cross the president, so, okay. Mr. President, you're right, this was your, and whatnot, so raise your right hand. Raise your right hand, here, why don't you stand right there? This is my apologies, so, okay. I, state your name.
I, Danny Maum.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
The duties incumbent?
The duties incumbent.
Upon me?
Upon me.
As a firefighter?
As a firefighter.
For the city of East Hampton?
For the city of East Hampton.
According to the best?
According to the best.
Of my knowledge and abilities?
So, best knowledge and ability.
Agreeably to the rules?
Agreeably to the rules.
And regulations of?
And regulations of?
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America?
Of the United States of America.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
The laws of Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the city of East Hampton?
And the city of East Hampton.
Congratulations, welcome aboard. Just sign your name back.
Sure.
For you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Sure.
Excellent. Raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Rosanna Lakis.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
The duties incumbent?
The duties incumbent.
Upon me?
Upon me.
As firefighter?
As firefighter.
For the city of East Hampton?
For the city of East Hampton.
According to the best?
According to the best.
Of my knowledge and abilities?
Of my knowledge and abilities.
Agreeably?
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations?
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution?
Of the Constitution.
Of the United States of America?
Of the United States of America.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
And the city of East Hampton?
And the city of East Hampton.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations. Public speak time. This is the opportunity to address the council regarding any topic, no listed on the public hearing. If you're here to talk to the council, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and go to the podium. I'm gonna start with the people that are in person, and then with the people that are participating remote.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Mary Emma Nserwin, and I live at 359 Main Street, Unit 2A. And I am here to thank the city of East Hampton for being a city of peace, and to invite the counselors and the public to a one-woman play, Palestine, and City Space, August 17th. In April, the council voted for a ceasefire in the Middle East with a lot of support from the community. We haven't achieved a ceasefire in Gaza yet, and the war looks, in fact, to be escalating. But it was an important declaration for peace and the preservation of life by our community, and I'm proud of us. With sponsorship and support from almost 20 community businesses and organizations, Najla Said will present her play, Palestine, to City and City Space. In the play, Najla describes growing up Arab-American and Palestinian in the United States. She brings us both to laughter and to tears, and an image of Arab-Americans and Palestinians emerges as the real people we are, and also as so greatly similar to all of the other first and second generation in this country and in East Hampton. We hope you will buy tickets on the City Space website. We hope also you will go to Galaxy Restaurant to try some of the Palestinian dishes that they will put on the menu during that week, and we also hope you will join Carolyn Cushing at the library, August 14th, for a discussion of Najla's memoir, Looking for Palestine. I also, so that's the play, but we really are a city of peace, and I want to express how proud I am of us in another way, of East Hampton as a city for peace. For the, I believe it's the third time our mayor, Nicole LaChapelle, has issued a proclamation rejecting nuclear weapons and honoring the dead of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, and on the anniversary of that horrific atomic bombing. And that, that proclamation was taken to a ceremony yesterday in Springfield. East Hampton has been a member of Mayors for Peace for almost 20 years, and in 2018, our city council voted for a ban on nuclear weapons. It is a moral conviction and also an act of self-preservation, as should nuclear weapons be deployed in Europe or in the Middle East, East Hampton will suffer from the effects. I'm leaving copies here, and I've given them to the counselors. I've also put copies of the play poster on the counter here. But at any rate, I freely thank you, Mayor Nicole, and the East Hampton Council for upholding with honor and conviction the sacredness of all lives, the gurning of all of us for peace. Thank you, I'm proud to be a resident of East Hampton.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Margaret Betts, and I know some of you in a variety of ways. I'm a teacher in East Hampton. I, also, my son goes to Williston and spends a lot of time with JT trying to find his various lost athletic equipment. I also am the newly elected Vice President of the East Hampton Education Association, and I'm also serving currently as, assuming the duties of the president, because we are currently have a vacancy. Not the president, we will have an election soon, but in the meantime, I am here to speak as an advocate on behalf of the students of East Hampton and the teachers of East Hampton. And it's about the Chapter 70 money. So, I am here to advocate that the mayor allocate all of the additional Chapter 70 money that is coming to East Hampton by way of the governor's new budget. So, in February, there was about $45,000 extra, Chapter 1 money, and that was all budgeted for. We now are to receive an additional $116,000, thanks to the MTA's advocacy, and also all of those of us who voted for the, for the millionaire's tax. All of that money is now supporting Chapter 70 and so many other great programs. So, the North Hampton mayor has already pledged to send all of that money, and it is, we are in an unprecedented time, because we typically don't get such a windfall. But we are also in unprecedented times in schools, or maybe precedent, honestly, because I've never taught a year where we couldn't use more. But right now, we are in negotiations, and this would allow us to absolutely settle the contract with lots left over. And additionally, one of the things that was part of the budget that is, that was sort of listed as a no longer needed position, was a special education position, but as you are probably all aware, our special education numbers exceed 20%, which is outside of the state average, and so it's a little bit hard to imagine that we don't actually need that position that we needed previously. So, I, I think in the spirit of compromise, the budget was set, they got in under 10%, we all saw how the sausage was made, and it makes perfect sense, but with the additional $116,000, we could potentially replace that position, settle our contract, be able to then move forward in a place of greater momentum, and also have a three-year contract settled, and have students who have a great deal of need get more of their needs met than they would have without that $116,000. So it is our request, we understand how the rules are, but we, we beg of you to allow for that money to go to the students of East Hampton. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just, I just wanna take a moment to address the recent article, online article regarding the park and recreation maintenance building needs. This building has been on the park and rec wishlist for 25 years now, and this article brought light to the community regarding our needs. You know, some of the things I, I wanna make sure people know is that the mayor and I have met many times this past six months to discuss replacement, potential costs, and the effects of disruption of services for the park and city park properties with shutting down a maintenance building. You know, some of the roadblocks that have delayed this, this current year has been staff shortage within city government, including the Building Department and Board of Health, as well as free cash certification. The mayor and I met in early July, discussed working out a plan for temporary office space and storage units for our park equipment and supplies, and we're looking to do that this fall, so we're minimizing disruption on services. I definitely wanna thank city leadership, city council, the mayor, the community, passed in park, recreation commissioners for their support on this project for our employees, and the support they give our department as a whole. And I also wanna thank the park and rec employees for always taking pride in the facilities we offer our community, and it really shows with, with how wonderful our park is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Say none, I will take a motion to open public hearing.
So much.
Say.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing, any further discussion? Say none, Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
JT Tyrell?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes, councilor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President, so we have two items for the public hearing, for the public this evening. Both of them are related to a request to amend Chapter 7, Section 7-17A, classification of employment by adding the following two positions, and I will address each of these individually, the first being the Sustainability Coordinator at Grade E. And just so the public knows, our Human Resource Director, Emily Russo, is also here, which at some point, I will defer to her, President Gomez, so, just to start, so the Sustainability Coordinator, as you know, we have had a conservation agent, and this position is an intent to draw, to pull some of the responsibilities that the conservation agent had taken on, to create a new position, so there was, so with this position, there's a strong focus on development and implementation of city policies, programs, and initiatives that promote environmental, energy, economic, and social sustainability. They are responsible for overseeing and executing the city climate action plan with departments, residents, and businesses. Up until now, as I mentioned, the conservation agent has been, has taken on the work of this position, however, with the passage of the Opt-In Specialized Code, and earning a climate leader, does, well, hopefully, I don't know that we received it yet, but the intent is to, to earn a climate leader designation, will open up funding for hiring a Sustainability Coordinator. The, our conversation included that this position will fall under DPW, and funding would come from the general fund. The council, or the committee, the ordinance committee passed it 3 to 0, and that was just kind of an overview of our particular meeting, but, Mr. President, with your permission, I would like to defer to Director Russo to provide additional information, and ask, answer any questions that, or be a part of answering any questions that council may have.
Emily?
Yeah, hi, everyone, so I'm Emily Russo, I'm the Human Resources Director, so I feel like Connie kinda hit the nail on the head with the position, what we're looking to do, and how the city has grown so much with our sustainability efforts. Cassie, who was our conservation agent, she really took on a lot of the responsibilities of the Sustainability Coordinator when she was here, but now she has left to go pursue new adventures, and we took that as an opportunity to really break it out into its own position, and to kind of revisit our Conservation Agent position as well. So, we really want this position to be a 30-hour-per-week position that we have tossed back and forth, whether it would go between the Planning Department or DPW. I think in, I know here we talked about it going in planning, but there is potential for it to end up in the DPW office, but, and then we're revisiting the Conservation Agent and the scope of that work, because Cassie was doing so much of this, so we're taking CPA, and we're adding that to the Conservation Agent position, and dropping the hours to 30 hours for that position as well, which will help alleviate some funding for the Sustainability Coordinator position as well.
Thank you, Director Russo. At this time, I'd be open to entertaining any questions from council, or workers from counselors, but I'll defer to you.
Counselor, have any questions, comments? Say none, anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Say none, councilor Denham?
Yeah, and just one last thing, well, now it's former, council recent agent, Cassie Triggerd, sad to be able to have to say that, but she also provided, provided a letter of support, which I will provide to the council clerk to include in the minutes for mention of that. So, this is a motion to amend city ordinance, Chapter 7, Section 7, 17A, to add the following Sustainability Coordinator at Grade E.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to, for the request to amend Chapter 7, personal, Section 7, 17A, classification of employment by adding the, the following two position, the Sustainability Coordinator at Grade E, and the Staff Engineer.
No, no.
Oh, there's just one, sorry. For one, no, the two, just one, the Sustainability Coordinator for, at Grade E, any further discussion? Say none, Barbara?
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
JT Tyrell?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye, motion passes, councilor Denham?
Yep, and the next item is to amend city ordinance, Chapter 7, Section 7, 17A, to add the following Staff Engineer at Grade F. And to some extent, I'm gonna defer to Director Russo, but essentially, this is an amendment to the ordinance to address a discrepancy in the position, when our last Staff Engineer was hired, they came in at the same grade and position as the City Engineer, but in reality, the City Engineer should be the supervisor of the Staff Engineer, and so I will defer to Director Russo, but the committee also passed this 3 to 0.
Yeah, yes, this, this is just a formality to make sure, you know, we have all our ducks in a row and everything lined up in the department correctly, so, we recently had our City Engineer move on as well, and so again, we took this as an opportunity to revisit and just make sure everything was correct in our pay plan, so we moved up our Staff Engineer to the City Engineer position, and then we're creating this Staff Engineer position one grade lower, so they would report to the City Engineer, and then ultimately, the DPW director would be above both of them. This isn't any additional funding, the funding is already there, it's just a matter of creating the position in pay plan.
Mr. President, we'll entertain any questions that council has, or public.
Any councilor have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Say none, councilor Denham?
First, I just wanna thank Director Russo for, for being here and providing context for both of these positions. So this is in the form of a motion to amend city ordinance, Chapter 7, Section 7, 17A, to add the following Staff Engineer at Grade F.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds for the request to amend Chapter 7, personal, Section 7, 17A, classification of employment, employees by adding the following position, Staff Engineer at Grade F. Any further discussion? Say none, Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
JT Tyrell?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Motion passes. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
Show vote, second.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearings, any further discussion? Say none, Barbara?
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
JT Tyrell?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
And Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes, public hearing is official close. A communication from elected official, official sports and committee, any councilor have anything, any communications? Say none, may I just communication, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. First, we are, external audit for last fiscal year has been completed, it is going to be posted on the website. I would request the Chair, the President and Chair of the Finance Committee allow time on a future Finance Committee meeting to discuss the findings in the audit, as well as new policies and procedures that we're putting in place, if, if that's possible. So, the audit's out there, to, at your discretion, if that can be put on a Finance Committee meeting, to just talk through it. The other piece I have, it related a little bit to the public speak, I have a proclamation around nuclear holocaust, and joining my fellow mayors and cities around the world. I've read this a couple of times, I will continue to, to read it. The, Back From The Brink has made, is an organization that has, has done a great job internationally bringing all of the mayors together around this issue of nuclear weapons, and that they just must go away and never be used. And unfortunately, that's two different things. So, never used, is hard to promise or say, or to proclaim, if you don't know who has them or wants them or can develop them. So if they don't exist anywhere, it's a large task, but one important. So with that, I read, whereas a world in which nuclear weapons exist and threaten our community and humanities very existence is a deeply unjust world. Whereas 79 years ago, on August 6th and August 9th, hundreds of thousands of human beings died, many instantly or suffered severe health consequences in the cities of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, Japan, when the United States dropped atomic bombs for the first and only time in armed conflict. Whereas many people- Whereas many people and communities within the United States have been and continue to be grievously harmed and suffer severe health consequences from the testing, development, and production of nuclear weapons and uranium mining. Whereas no individual in any community can be truly safe and secure if they are hungry, hungry, lack proper housing, education, or healthcare, or are regularly subject to the threat of physical harm than violence or nuclear war. Whereas the full cost of U.S. nuclear weapons in twenty twenty-three alone, including for weapon development, testing and maintenance, environmental cleanup, missile defense, and non-clarification initiatives was estimated at ninety billion dollars, with plans underway to spend an estimated one point five trillion dollars by twenty forty-six to replace its entire nuclear arsenal, the bombers, missiles, submarines that deliver them with more capable, more usable versions. Whereas a U.S.-based national group's campaign called Back From The Brink, bringing communities together to abolish nuclear weapons, calls on the United States to lead a global effort among all nuclear weapons states to achieve a verifiable time-bound agreement to eliminate all nuclear weapons from the planet and to adopt common sense policies to reduce the risks of nuclear war, and which has been endorsed by over four hundred and sixty-five health, environmental, academic, peace, faith, and justice organizations in over eighty U.S. municipality, counties, and states that have adopted resolutions supporting Back From The Brink policy solutions. Therefore, I, Nicola Chappell, Mayor of East Hampton, do proclaim August sixth and August ninth of twenty twenty-four to be lifting community voices for a world free of nuclear weapons in the city of East Hampton. Um, additionally, I, there's a um, I don't often give book recommendations at city council. Not sure when I'd do it again, but I will do it today. Um, there, um, wait, I get a lot of pushback on this, I'm sure I'll get a couple of emails of why a mayor of a town of sixteen thousand Western Mass would actually care to do this. Um, and and that's really because um we are so close to nuclear war right now. And it it would take less than ninety seconds of weapons to be fired from anywhere in the world to end human existence. Ninety seconds. Um, there's a great book uh by Annie Jacobson, um Nuclear War, A Scenario. Sounds like it would be um a great movie and um it's very compelling, except it's real time. And and there's, um, there's, okay, there's one quote in movie, uh, in the I'm making, uh, in the book that I really think puts a new light on this proclamation. Um, Annie Jacobson, in Nuclear War, A Scenario, writes, "Humans are wired to advance. Humans do whatever it takes, and yet, nuclear war zeroes it all out. Nuclear weapons reduce human brilliance, ingenuity, love, and desire, empathy, and intellect to ash." And that's why I will continue to read this. There we go. Thank you.
Um, may you just one second, I think a counselor have a question for you.
I my apologies.
Counselor Smith?
Um, and then, Mayor, I was just wondering if you have any update that you could share regarding the chapter seventy funds and how those will be allocated?
Yeah, so, um, uh, uh, Margaret Betts and and I had a quick conversation about it. Um, so the additional money, I don't know exactly how it will be used, what what is treated. It, chapter seventy and what's called local aid goes right into our general fund. And it comes every year, the amount changes, uh, you know, back and forth. So the money, the fiscal money will come into the general fund and then um we will look at, um, not even look at, then the school superintendent and Nick Burney or the business manager take a look at that. Um, one question or or several questions I have, what fiscal year does it come in for? Um, but also was there, were there services that weren't fulfilled that could be with this money? Um, and I would leave that in the hands of the superintendent uh and business manager. Uh, the actual dollars, it's not like the dollar comes in, it says chapter seventy. Um, there's a six percent increase in health insurance for everybody in city, including um including teachers, uh, and everybody covered by that contract. There are other, and and we have buffered that increase by taking that on with city dollars happily. Um, and will we need to use some of those chapter seventy monies for the indirect cost of benefits for those in the union? Maybe. Um, I I do think that there is, I think there's two conversations to have. I think one, um, there's a conversation and explanation of when chapter seventy local aid comes in. When I see those amounts, I just look at those amounts and I take them out of my mind for the budget. I say that, well, I'll go to schools. And not just chapter seventy, but also local aid. Um, with extra money in the past that has come in, this is not the first time it's happened. Um, it has come in from the last fiscal year and we have applied it to benefits or sometimes to more, um, uh, the school might have bought computers or there's something they did not buy in the regular budget. Um, and they do so, so I mean, it just seems to have happened since this year. Um, we weren't sure what was gonna happen chap, happened to chapter seventy money. We were a minimum made community, we only get thirty dollars a kid and it was a hole. Um, it's a part of the hole that I filled, um, I backfilled regardless of that. We use some ARPA money to fulfill our capital requests from the schools for a new truck to replace the eight twenty oh eight truck. Um, you know, so you know, filling in that and that's off the list and what Nick and superintendent, you know, um. I don't control the school committee budget. There's a whole bunch of things that can happen. That extra money is not a scratch to give for the city that will buy a nuclear fund or or go to a city capital project. But I'm not sure where to go on the school budget. Um, and and I know negotiations are, but there is, um, yeah, it it's not like, oh, we didn't budget for chap, this amount of chapter seventy, cause it's so much and then it should go for the school. It shouldn't go to the schools, that's budget, we can use it for expenses. I I just don't know where the cash flow is, um, or negotiations are of how to use those towards the school. But it it will go towards, it it's school, there's school dollars and maybe Maureen and uh superintendent and Nick, probably the business manager, can give a a more, but there's there's no blockage from my office or from the audit office or treasures. Education money has, you know, I don't wanna remind, it has a lot of, uh, very specific purposes. It does specific things once the school um gets their uh lump of money for their year. Um, it's not an all be all, um, and how they use it is really up to them. But yeah, this, I I and uh have a very nice conversation with Ms. Betts. This isn't about taking money and putting it under the pillow or doing something else with it. It'll go to schools, but I think Nick, I'll leave the exact to to Nick.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah.
Reports of standing committees, finance, counselor Peak?
Uh, thank you, Mister President. Uh, we did not meet since our last meeting. Uh, due to some vacation schedules and stuff, the next time we're going to meet is going to be August twenty-eighth. Uh, at that time, uh, we'll discuss the uh the business that we uh are going to be uh moving to finance tonight as well as, excuse me. Um, um, as well as the uh a review of salaries uh for elected officials and appointed uh committees. Uh, I don't know that we could get that item onto the the about the audit, onto the agenda uh since it's just coming to me now, but it's something that I'd I would be interested in in pursuing in early uh September. And uh so, yeah, August twenty eighth, five thirty, uh, conference room one, provided that it's available, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor. Safety, Counselor Riley?
Uh, thank you, Mister President. Uh, the Public Safety Committee has not met since our last meeting um and we do not have one scheduled as of yet, um, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Riley. Appointments, Counselor Riley?
Thank you, Mister President. I don't know if you all saw that, um, but I kind of got stuck in a little visual loop. Yeah, there it goes again. It's all right. Um, okay, so, uh, I have a lot to get through here um in the next few moments and I'm not feeling well, so I I would just ask that everybody please be patient with me um as I get through this committee report. Um, so the Appointment Committee has met twice since our last meeting to review several appointees. On July twenty-second, we discussed the city council's reappointment of Barbara La Bombard to the position of clerk to the city council with a term expiration date of August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Um, you know, so obviously words cannot express Barb's dedication to this body and to the city of East Hampton. And while our meetings typically discuss qualifications, it sort of felt foolish um to do so since she's been our council clerk uh since the first day that there was a city council. Um, interestingly, that's why the clerk term expires on August thirty-first and not December thirty-first like the rest of our committees and uh appointees. Um, because the uh first day of the city government for East Hampton began on a September first. Um, so instead, we asked her about uh what we can do to support her as she moves towards retirement and what we might consider for the next clerk of the city council. Um, so first, as you might imagine, um, getting materials to her before deadlines so she doesn't have to rush at the last minute to uh amend council agendas um would be hugely important. So much of the clerk's routines are fixed with deadlines and when we don't do our part, it makes the job of the clerk unnecessarily difficult. Um, second is that we can write up the minutes of our committee meetings um and get them approved at our very next committee meetings. Producing minutes for meetings is an essential part of every governing body's duties across the United States. And clerks must be diligent in completing this task and uh chairs must ensure um that the clerks are producing them in a timely manner. So I'm calling on all of us as a body, get your minutes done so that way she can put them up on the website for the public record. And then lastly, uh, the job of the clerk has a fixed stipend, um, just like the school committee and the city council. Um, but it isn't regularly considered like the school committee or city council is. So um going forward, um, and I'm happy to hear that we'll be doing this at the next finance committee, um, that whenever stipends are being considered, please also um review the council clerk position at that time. Um, you know, I just want to reemphasize this, that the council clerk is our employee and uh we should be doing our part uh to be good employers and to take care of the people that we oversee. So I'm gonna end my soapbox um for that specific position. Um, next, we met with Maxwell Swisher, um, whom the mayor is appointing to the zoning board of appeals with a term expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, as a member of the public, Max has been an active participant in the political process for much of the last two years. Um, many on the city council, the planning board, the zoning board, and the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership are familiar with his advocacy. At our meeting, we discussed the duties of the zoning board, um, a brief review of zoning ordinances and other topics such as um how to make dis- difficult decisions um in the face of public scrutiny and the ability to collaborate and network across many governmental bodies. Um, also, uh, we had conversations about this seismic task of the Main Street Chapter B forty housing development. Um, we all felt uh that he was more than sufficient in meeting the qualifications. Um, the Appointment Committee voted three zero to recommend both appointees. Um, so I just wanted to pause here for a second to see if any counselors had questions about either appointee.
Does any counselor have any questions or comments about these two appointees? Before you keep moving, I I do have a comment and it's about, of course, Barbara. Um, I've been serving as a council president almost for three years and I have to say that my job, my job is uh much easier having Barbara next to me. I know that sometimes we give her a really hard time, especially like do, days like today that we have to amend the agenda at the last minute and a lot of work and I respect her work, um, because I know you're doing a great job. Um, this council is not the East Hampton City Council. Uh, cannot be as East Hampton City Council without you. Uh, you're doing a great job and I hope you never retire. I I I know that's uh selfish, but I I really appreciate what you do and I hope that the next council president have you next to him or her uh because that will be the good ad to the next council president. Um, anyone else? Counselor Riley?
All right, thank you, Mister President. Um, so this is the, in the form of a motion. Um, I move to appoint Barbara La Bombard to clerk of city council with a term expiration date of August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six and Maxwell Swisher to the zoning board of appeals with a term expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve those two appointments. Any further discussion? See you know, Barbara?
Tamara Smith?
Hi.
JT Tyrell?
Hi.
Connie Denham?
Yes.
Omar Gomez? JP Kuzinski?
Resounding yes.
Tom?
Hi.
And Brad Riley?
Hi.
Motion passes, Counselor Riley?
Thank you, Mister President. Um, and so then the committee met on August fifth to discuss four appointments. Um, first, we met with Stephen Coughlin, who is being appointed to the Board of Health with a term expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Um, so first, you might recall in meetings past, the outreach and recruitment efforts to identify a third member of the Board of Health. Um, for quite some time, we've only had two members um and the business of the city's public health has always been a single disagreement away from no progress on important matters. Um, so having a third member secures the business uh of the Board of Health. So um Stephen's resume has extensive experience as a registered nurse. Um, he began his education at Springfield Technical Community College um before going on to get his bachelor in nursing. Um, I do also want to point out that he graduated with a class award for clinical excellency um and he was the youngest person in the history of the program to um receive that award. Um, he's also provided direct care for the Navajo Nation and for Apache Native American people um and worked as the assistant clinical nurse manager of the Cooley Dickinson Emergency Room, just to name a few examples. There, I could literally go on. There's there's about a dozen or so. Um, the committee recommended his appointment um three zero. And next, we met with Leslie Horn Button, um, who is being appointed to the Council on Aging with a term expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Leslie has an extensive forty-year career with the UMass um Amherst system, um, working her way all the way through the library system to eventually become the assistant dean of the library. Um, so we discussed her career, um, the process of caring for aging parents while also being a person who is actively aging and um her various roles at the Council on Aging. Um, first as a service user, um, then as a a part-time volunteer and then also recently in her work with the Ad Hoc Building Committee. Um, so as you all recall, um, we are currently looking for uh a new home for uh the Council on Aging. A part of her uh work on the Ad Hoc Committee has been visiting senior centers across Western Massachusetts to identify some best practices and programmatic features. Um, the committee also voted three zero to recommend her appointment. Um, so once again, I will pause to see if there are any questions about either of these appointees.
Any counselor have comments or questions? See none? Counselor Riley?
Okay, thank you, Mister President. Um, so I move to appoint Stephen Coughlin to the Board of Health with a term expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six and Leslie Horn Button to the Council on Aging with a term expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second, I have a motion and a second to appoint, to appoint those two appointees. Uh, any further discussion? See you know, Barbara?
JT Tyrell?
Hi.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Omar Gomez? J P Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes, Counselor Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And so the next two appointees, we did not have the ability to meet. So this is... What we are dealing with now is that we are running into the end of the window for appointing appointees. This is a common occurrence that happens in the summer when we only meet for City Council one time per month. To be fair, there would still be time to meet with the appointees at the Appointment Committee on the nineteenth. However, by the time we have our next City Council meeting, the window to appoint them would have already passed. And according to our city charter, they would just automatically be appointed. So as a committee, we felt that it was important to give the full council the opportunity to engage in a dialogue with each of these appointees applications if you choose to do so. So the two people that we are talking about right now is Dave Del Vecchio, who would be appointed to EDIC, and then Leslie Tain, who would be appointed to the Commission on Disability. So the first thing that I would just like to call out is that the Commission on Disability has certain requirements, you know, where you would ask questions about people's disability status. And under normal circumstances, these kinds of questions would never be okay, but we are guided by law to have certain requirements. One said requirement is that we should have one appointee on the Commission on Disability who is the immediate family member of people with disabilities. And I can confirm that Leslie meets that criteria. So I am open to however we would like to deliberate on this topic or if you feel that it's even necessary at all.
Any consorts have any concerns? See you now, Counselor Riley.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So I move to appoint Dave Del Vecchio to EDIC and Leslie Tain to the Commission on Disability, both with term expiration dates of December thirty first, two thousand twenty four.
Second?
I have a motion and a second for the two new appointees. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez? J P Kozinski? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
J T Terrell?
Aye.
Motion passes, Counselor Riley.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. And so the last motion that I would like to make here today is to request a ninety-day extension on the mayor and City Council Appointment Review Process.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to extend for that ninety days that requests to review the process for the mayor and the City Council appointments. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
J P Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
J T Terrell?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. And then in just a few moments later on today, we'll be moving some appointees, you know, into the committee. So the Appointment Committee meeting will next occur August nineteenth at six P M. in Conference Room Two behind City Council chambers, and thus concludes.
Thank you. Orders, Counselor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was on July seventeenth, and we covered the items for the public hearing this evening. Our next meeting will be August twentieth at five P M. in Conference Room One. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to extend the request for temporary moratorium on use of sewage ludge fertilizer in East Hampton for ninety days.
Second, I have a motion and a second to extend that item for ninety days. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
Let's see, J P Kozinski? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
J T Terrell?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes, Counselor Denham?
And at our next meeting, we will... The Agricultural Commission has done a lot of research on what communities are doing around PFAS, and they have shared that with me, and I will share that information with the committee at that next meeting. And additionally, we have some new items in new business that we'll be discussing at that time. And that's everything that our committee has to offer council this evening.
Thank you, Counselor Denham. Property, Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not met since our last one, so thank you.
For the report, rules and government relations. Counselor Kozinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have the opportunity to meet and discuss all items of business. Let me start briefly with two of the items. Rule five C. Counselor Zarrett had recommended that we tighten up the rules to be more transparent. And I fully agree, and I think the full committee fully agreed with that. The question was how best to do it, so we're involved in the mechanics of that right now, actually consulting with our clerk, who had the right to go away on vacation and has. But when she has the opportunity, I'm sure we're going to be able to deal with some of the specifics. And we may be able to actually develop a form that will be helpful as part of the process to help the public understand exactly what we're doing when we say we're going to discuss rule five C. And so that covers the introduction of business. With regard to the other matters, the review of all council rules, we discussed this matter and felt that we should be dealing with each rule individually. And if anyone here would like to be able to make any changes to the rules or any suggestions, then they should feel free to deal with that at any point to come up with an individual recommendation, writing up a new rule as best as possible. And then the committee will be able to discuss and make amendments, et cetera, or changes, or say this really isn't what we want to do at this time. So that was how we were going to proceed, along with review of Robert's rules, which may help us to understand all the general rules of meetings. We have the charter. We have the rule, the Robert's rules. We have our own council rules, and each one plays a part in how we conduct our business. So there was a packet that was going to be brought up at the next meeting of Robert's rules. It's a condensed version, but it is said to be very helpful in bringing up many of the issues. On the item of business, which we've been working on for quite some time, and that is rank choice voting for multi-winner races. The committee has met, I think, about five times. We've actually enjoyed a short ten- or fifteen-minute video on the subject, which our consultant provided us, Dan Gilbert, who has been instrumental, an unpaid consultant, but really an expert in rank choice voting, helping to understand us, for us to understand the nuances of rank choice voting, the nuances of multi-winner ranked choice voting, which is even a bit more complicated than rank choice voting in many ways. So the question is, is it worth the trade-off of having a system that... Well, it takes some education to understand. And I think there's every effort that if this moves forward, to have that education. And it'll be a process that could take some time. So that, along with the benefits of rank choice voting, and the benefits being that to be more inclusive of all different groups, particularly any fringe groups, minority groups, those people who don't... They're not part of the majority. And I think Counselor Peak would agree with me that the rank choice voting helps to bring those voices to the table, either directly or as part of the process of, well, going around and saying, "Well, if I can't be your first vote, can I be your second vote?" To make appeals to all the voters that is more inclusive, more expansive. And I think what we came down with is, yeah, we really have to put this forward and come up with some plan to get that education out there. So we agreed to some terms, of which I'd be happy to read, regarding the proposed special legislation, special act that will be asking the legislature to approve. That part of the process was to have the legislature understand that we have voted on this before, albeit to study the matter, to explore the subject, which is different from having the voters decide, "Yes, we are going to have rank choice voting if you approve." And that's a matter that we'll be asking the legislature. If you approve legislature of our charter revision, then the whole matter of rank choice voting would then go before the electorate of East Hampton for them to decide the matter directly. This is a fundamental change. There isn't that much that really is fundamental to democracy, fundamental to our rights. And that's the vote, and how that vote is counted. If we're going to make alterations to the system that we've had, it really should be the voters who make that decision. So consequently, the committee voted three to zero to make this recommendation to the full council that we move forward with the legislature. I'd be happy to entertain further questions, should there be any.
Any consorts have any questions, Counselor Peak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Counselor Kozinski, for all your hard work on this. I know it's been quite a long technical slog, same to the other members. I really appreciate it. I have one matter I just want to bring to people's attention. And I don't anticipate getting my way on this, but I do think it's important to at least state my reasoning here and have people hear this because I have a suspicion it's going to play out in a certain way, and I think it's important for people to hear it. So when we had initially proposed this recommendation, we felt that the wording of the non-binding public policy question was sufficient in its wording to warrant us to say, "The voters have already said we should look into this, and if we approve it, send a legislative act." That is, the voters have already voted on this. Now, there's two reasons that I've heard from the committee for instead pushing it to require one additional vote. The consequence of that being that it would push implementation back two years from whenever the legislature gets around to passing this. Now, there's two reasons. The first one is to say that the language of the petition or of the original non-binding act was not sufficiently clear and not that the intent of it being yes would be for us to go forward with the legislative petition and thus that it's important that there might have been people who voted yes on this but who would vote no if it came back, you know, at a second time. I don't personally buy that, but it's... And it certainly wasn't my intent when I wrote it. But if you feel that my language was not sufficient, then I don't know what I could do to convince you. The second point, and I think that this was the one that was more heavily discussed at the last meeting, was that we had received a communication from our current state representative, Rep. Carey, saying that the state legislature would not pass this legislative petition if it asked for it to be implemented right away. However, that they would pass it if all we were asking is for it to be put on the ballot for a second vote. And this is awkward because I am very... I think Rep. Carey's a great guy. I think he's very smart. I've been working on this issue as an advocate on the state level for some time, and I don't know where he's getting that idea because right now, there are a number of petitions by other municipalities to enact ranked choice voting that are being held up in committee. There's no reason being given for why they are being held up in committee because the state legislature meets behind closed doors and exempts itself from public meeting law. The general thought of all of these committees or all of these cities and towns, that includes Northampton, that includes Amherst, I believe, Andover, a handful, Brookline, I believe, a handful of other eastern Massachusetts communities. Their hope is that when Boston asks to... When Boston, who's currently... This is currently in the works in their City Council, when they ask to put it on the ballot, that since approximately ten percent of the legislature represents Boston, that there will be a sufficient weight to clear this logjam. But if we want to put this forward and say that we're going to do this, and hey, then it can be on the ballot then in 2025. We can vote on that and implement it in 2027, then I don't agree with that, but I will accept it as the committee's determination. But I want to warn you right now that I very, very heavily believe that unless our next state rep is some sort of absolute, like incredible persuader who can do what currently about a dozen state reps across the state have not been able to do and clear that logjam, this is going to sit in committee for a while. It's quite likely it could sit in committee past the deadline to get it on our 2025 ballot. That means potentially ending up in a situation where maybe if we're lucky, we can vote on it in 2027 and implement it in 2029. I just want to bring this up because it was an important... It sounded, when I'm in this meeting, like that was an important part of your logic in saying, "Let's do this. Let's bring this back to East Hampton for a second vote" rather than taking that first vote as good reason to move forward. And I just want to say that I don't know what Representative Carey is hearing, but there are bills doing exactly what... There are legislative petitions that are structured exactly like this that are being held up. So the idea that structuring like this is going to keep it from being held up, unless there's something really special about East Hampton, I don't think that's true. If we get the same treatment as every other city and town, that treatment is for this to get held up until hopefully Boston clears that logjam.
Any other consorts? Counselor Riley?
Thank you for that explanation, Counselor Peak. So what would you suggest, then, that we do for tonight? Also, I guess I can't see the full room. Is Dan in attendance tonight? That he could provide some extra clarification?
No, he's not. He is not, but I've talked to Dan, and he would say what I just said.
Okay, so I am fully in support of promoting ranked choice voting. I guess I would just ask, what do you think is the best way forward for us tonight? What would be your professional way forward? What do you think we should do?
Counselor Peak?
Well, there's two choices. If the general feeling of the committee is that the language that we had in the non-binding petition was not sufficient and that this will need to come back for a second vote, then I think we should just move forward with it. I would just say that it's my personal opinion that we are actually... We're okay. If that... If these people felt... If that, if the people, if people felt that the initial language was sufficient, then I would suggest that we either amend it back to the beginning or send it back to committee. If the feeling is that we want to send the thing that would get passed the quickest. If people feel that the opinion, that my experience and Dan Gilbert's experience and the experience of the statewide advocacy group that we've worked with is not as valid as what Rep. Kerry might have heard, then I'd suggest you, you just vote on it like normally. It kind of comes down to how you view these things.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, I mean, you know, I sort of share the same sentiment as you and I sort of have some relative experience with Beacon Hill that they do happen to just make decisions without consulting people and without being able to see the deliberative process. So I'm inclined to think that Representative Kerry is probably telling the truth because somebody in a leadership role probably told him that's the way it was going to be and it's not up for discussion. I don't, I don't know what it is about challenging conventional governance in Massachusetts, but it does seem to be a longstanding tradition on Beacon Hill to not allow people to progress in a form of governance that actually represents the people in their communities. So, you know, I'm inclined to, to side with you on this, Counselor Peak. And then maybe it's just, you know, applying public pressure and, you know, having people write in to, to advocate for this. To me, it sucks that it has to constantly be this way with the state, but we're not going to change that. So I don't know. Okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Counselor Peak?
Yeah, I just, I'll shut up soon. I just want to make this, just to put this a little bit in, just clarify because I said a lot of things, make it clear. Northampton currently has a legislative petition before the State House that is functionally exactly like this, except for it also includes single winner. They, their city council sent it not last year and not the year before. It's been there a while. And that is, all it's doing is asking for the same thing that we asked for in 2019, that they, that the legislature basically approved their special act pending a vote from the population. They have been denied that vote. I think at this point, at least one, probably two municipal elections have come and gone since they submitted it, and they have been denied that vote. Amherst passed their ranked choice voting in a charter commission, which is a whole different special process. They were told that they had to actually send it to the legislature. They did. The legislature has sat on it for years. So just to be clear, what I'm saying is that until that process gets fixed, I do not think that there is any version of this that we are going to send to the legislature that they are going to pass. And so I just think that if we're talking about a version that when it eventually gets passed, we could quickly implement, or a version that when it gets passed, we then need to hold an additional special election, despite the fact that this has already been on the ballot and was approved by a strong margin, and that then, from there, we have to, we have to, we then get two years and then we can implement it. My preference would be the first. But if people feel differently on this, I will take what I can get. I just wanted to put that out there because there seems to have been this understanding on the part of Rep. Kerry that if we send it like this, it'll get passed. I'm honestly fine just sending it like this and seeing if they bite, but I'm just telling you, I don't think they will. And so if, and if they in fact, and I worry that about just, I worry about a lot of stuff, I guess is what I'm saying. I worry that, I worry that some of the amendments that were made in the final session of this were made under a certain understanding and completely good faith that doesn't conform with what the people that we've paid, that the group, the statewide group I'm affiliated with, they've hired lobbyists, they've come back with certain things, they've reached out to their own state reps. We've discussed this with very active sponsors of these bills. And all of that is telling me something that is very different from what I was hearing here. So I just, I do feel like I need to state that.
Any other consular?
Counselor Kozinski? Just would like to respond to a couple, couple things. And I agree with you. This, this may not go anywhere with the legislature. And it may never go anywhere with the legislature, or it could. I'd like to be sure that we give it its best shot to go forward. And the best shot that we're being told by our representative is to have it come back to the people afterwards. That happens to be a position with which I agree and all the members of the committee agreed with. That's why we had the unanimous recommendation of three to zero. Because in the end, the people will have to make this fundamental charter change themselves. And it's important that they understand that ranked choice voting on a single winner election has its issues, but those issues are more pronounced the more multiple winners you have. In this case, our city council has four at-large folks elected, and the school committee has six folks elected at large. So there's all sorts of questions that I think need to be explored and understood by the public. And they're like, my prediction is this will pass at the subsequent vote. But that's a prediction, could be right, could be wrong. Should it pass? From my point today, I'd say it should. I want to give it its best shot, and that's why we're recommending going forward. The issue of exploring and the binding vote or non-binding vote, well, it was listed as a non-binding vote. It's possible that people would look at it and say, geez, that was a non-binding vote. I thought the council should study the matter. I never meant to vote yes, that it should be something we automatically now do. That requires additional thought. So what was, if you look at the language of the ballot, if successful, the city council will explore petitioning the Massachusetts State Legislature for a special act to amend the city charter to use ranked choice voting for multi-winner races. And if you go to the Cambridge Dictionary, to explore means to think about, to talk about, to study something, or to experience it in order to find out more about it, explore the possibility. And that's what we did, and that's why we're recommending coming back to the, to the public. Thank you, Mr. President. Any other members of the committee?
I think it's just important to acknowledge that incumbent candidates in Massachusetts don't want competition, right? That's the fact. And I think that ranked choice voting creates opportunity for more individuals, the opportunity to, to win a race and to participate in the opportunity of governance. I don't know what way is the right way or the wrong way or what's going to take the least amount of time. At this point, we are just receiving recommendation from our state rep of, of a particular avenue. When I was at the meeting, I think that's the sheet right there that President Gomez has. And all the applications or appeals or whatever to have this, they've all died in committee. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that people aren't interested in competition, particularly at an electoral, an electoral process. And so I think our representative is saying, hey, this is the avenue that I think is going to be the best. If we go your avenue and it doesn't happen, then we go back and end up doing this anyway. And so I just, I just think that we need to position ourselves in the, in the best possible light to be able to, to pass.
Counselor Peak?
Yeah, I just want to point out that there is a precedent. When we did the municipal light plan, the municipal light plan was a non-binding vote, which means that the voters who passed it with 80-something percent of the vote said we wanted to do it. And then our city government did not do it. You know, we just, we, we, we looked at the situation and for a variety of reasons, did not do it. But we would have been able to do it, and we would have been able to do it without bringing it back for a second vote. The question is, should the city look into this? And with that, the, the point is that this entire process, the way that this entire thing works is, is all, it's, it's, it's based on a section of the Home Rule Act that basically says that the, the way you should actually amend your, your charter is through a charter commission, and here's how you do a charter commission. And then right at the end, there's a, just a, I'd paraphrase it, but there's like a sentence or two saying, or you can ask the state legislature to change it. There's nothing in the state legislature, there's nothing beyond that in there. There's no actual requirements that the state legislature has whatsoever about what you have to do. The state legislature has, has a precedent over time that some legislative petitions, they require going back to the voters for. Some legislative petitions, they don't. What we attempted to do here was to say, let's go to the voters upfront. Let's ask them upfront if this is something we should even pursue. Because the last time we did a ranked choice voting thing, it was immensely, it took up, it was very time-intensive to work through the Charter Review Committee and then to lobby the state government for months to pass it. And so the thought was, let's ask the voters upfront. So that was our logic here. Ask the voters upfront. If the voters do agree, then we can move forward. If the voters had said they weren't interested, I wouldn't be going through this process. It sounds like that idea, the logic behind that is not appealing. So we can, we can do it this way. I, I think that what's going to happen is it's going to get held up the same as all the others that are structured like this. And I think that when it finally does pass due to other situations beyond our control, we are going to ultimately just delay implementation for two years despite the fact that over 60% of the city did ask us to do this. I think that's a mistake, but I'll still vote for it because I think moving it forward is better than, than not. But if we end up sitting on this for, you know, a legislative session, and then it gets sent to committee with the rest of them, I might suggest that we come back and have another conversation about this because I think that, I don't think that this is necessarily the, the path that actually gives it a better chance. I don't think that the powers that be on Beacon Hill right now and in the situation that they're in have any interest of giving any of these a chance. And it's going to take a lot of more built-up momentum from a lot of other places and a lot of pressure to get them to even consider relenting on that. But I'm, I'm done trying to argue against it.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Counselor Riley?
So just a point of clarification, Mr. President. The, when we come to this vote, voting in the affirmative would be the recommendation of the committee and voting against would be essentially what Counselor Peak was suggesting. Is that correct?
No, if we say no, we're not sending anything.
Okay, so this, okay.
And if we say yes, then the mayor have to agree too to send it to, to the legislators because the mayor can stop it too.
Okay, but, but saying yes?
Is to approve it the way that we approved it at the committee.
Right.
That will be basically sending all the language and telling the legislators that we are, if they approve it, that we're going to put on the ballot to be binding. And after they vote and the city of East Hampton approve it in a, in a general election, then we, we adopt it.
And so to, so if, if it were my belief that we should put it on the ballot first and let the people decide, I would be voting no on this motion, is that correct?
Yes. Can you repeat that?
So if, if I believe that we should just send this to the voters first and have a vote and then send the this, we don't have to do a second vote on this?
This time, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Any other consular? I just want to say something really quick and then we will, we will take the motion. And Counselor Peak, you can make an amendment if, if you want to. I just want to, you know, we lose it. All right, see, I'll take, find a break. Wow, sorry for technical difficulties, but we're back.
Good job, Mr. President. Barbara?
About you, thank you. Let me, okay. So I was close to said that I, that I feel happy and comfortable voting the way that the, the committer, the committee recommended to the full council. And I will use two main reasons. The first one is because came of, for the recommendation of the Representative Kerry. And based on what we had in our hand in that meeting, and that he would give us the information to the, all the bills presented, all the petition presented to the legislators. All those bills are dead. The only one who passed, and that was in 2019, 2020, section 1991, but then was introduced by Senator Hummerson and State Rep. Kerry. It's the same thing, so it's the only one. And I, I'm pretty sure, I'm not going to talk in behalf of Representative Kerry, but I'm pretty sure he had multiple conversations with the leadership in Boston. And I bet you that one of the recommendations was that, like, add this, the language, and that is probably can change what we can see at the end, right? That, that's why. I will be in favor of what we recommend. And the second one is, and I know sometimes take time and it could be painful, the time it could take. But something that I love about this country is about democracy, right? And every time that we have to ask the public and the constituents to act for something, I'm always okay. I'm always okay. And that's the system that we live and that's the system that I love. Because at the end, the people have the voice and we have to listen to them. That's for the reason I'm, I'm okay voting for the recommendation of the committee. Counselor Kozinski?
I'm ready to present the, the motion.
And is any other consul have any questions or comments? Counselor Kozinski?
I move the city council requests the state legislature approve a special act amending the Home Rule Charter of the City of East Hampton as follows. I'll read what we, the petition itself in its entirety. An act amending the Home Rule Charter of the City of East Hampton, section one, section one point, one dash seven of Article One of the Charter of the City of East Hampton, which is on file in the Office of the Archivists of the Commonwealth pursuant to section, chapter of 43B of the General Laws, is hereby amended to by fully replacing the existing definition of ranked choice voting with the following. uh, is hereby amended to by fully replacing the existing definition of ranked choice voting with the following. Ranked choice voting, the words ranked choice voting in parentheses, shall mean an election system in which each voter shall cast a single vote by, uh, ranking candidates in order of preference indicating the voter's first choice, second choice, third choice, and so on. Continuing until the voter has assigned a single numerical ranking to each candidate on the ballot or until the voter chooses to stop ranking. Definition specific to ranked choice voting shall have the following meanings. Continuing candidate. The words continuing candidate shall mean any candidate that has not been declared as elected or defeated. Concluded ballot. The words concluded ballot shall mean any ballot which does not contain a highest-ranked continuing candidate. Proportional value. The words proportional value shall mean a persistent decimal number associated with each non-concluded ballot. Every ballot shall have a starting proportional value equal to one. Winning threshold. The words winning threshold shall mean a value equal to the number, total number of non-concluded ballots cast in a race divided by the sum of the number of unelected positions in that race, plus one. Transfer factor. The words transfer factor shall mean a value equal to the difference between the total number of votes received by an elected candidate and the current winning threshold divided by the total number of votes received by the elected candidate. Tabulation process. The words tabulation process shall mean the process of determining the results of an election that uses ranked choice voting. The election shall be tabulated in successive rounds with each round proceeding as follows. A, count. Each continuing candidate's vote total shall be reset to zero. The winning threshold shall be recalculated for the current round. Each ballot shall be counted by adding its current proportional value to the vote total for the highest ranked continuing candidate on that ballot. B, declare. If any continuing candidate has a vote total that is greater than the current winning threshold, that candidate shall be declared elected, and a transfer value for that candidate shall be calculated. If a candidate was elected, all ballots that were counted for that candidate shall have their previous proportional value multiplied by the transfer value for that candidate. And the result shall be recorded as the new proportional value for that ballot. If no candidate was elected, then the candidate who has the lowest vote total shall be declared defeated. C, repeat. If the number of elected candidates is equal to the number of positions being elected or if there are no more continuing candidates, this is the last round. Otherwise, begin a new round. Section two. Article seven of said chapter is hereby amended by striking out section seven dash one point one and seven dash one point two and by inserting at the end of section seven dash one, the following. Notwithstanding any general or special law to the contr- contrary, elections for all elected city offices shall be conducted using ranked choice voting as defined in section one dash seven of Article One, unless the total number of qualified candidates is equal to one, in which case plurality voting shall be used. Section three. The president of the City Council of the City of East Hampton shall appoint an ad hoc committee to revise the existing ranked choice voting ordinance. The ad hoc committee shall consist of the city clerk or the city clerk's designee, one member of the Board of Registers of Voters, two members of the City Council, and three registered voters of the city. The ad hoc committee shall present its proposed ordinance revisions to the City Council for its review and adoption, subject to the amendment by which the City Council, by the City Council and the approval of, by the mayor pursuant to the procedural requirements for ordinances under the Charter of the City of East Hampton. Section four. Section two shall be placed on the ballot for acceptance by the voters of the City of East Hampton at the next city election. The city solicitor, solicitors shall prepare and include a summary of the, the question to be printed on the ballot. Section five. Sections one and three shall take effect upon acceptance by the voters of section two pursuant to this act, but shall not be implemented for an election that may occur within forty-five days after approval of any such ballot question.
Need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to send the Sampton ranked choice voting home petition to the legislators. Any further discussion? Counselor Kozinski?
I just would like to say, I would like to give this a chance. I would like to see this, uh, have the opportunity. East Hampton was successful before. This is the best possible way to get it accepted again, in my opinion, and in the state rep's opinion.
Any other counsel? Counselor Denham?
Yeah, I want to believe that in a community that is over ninety percent white, that ranked choice voting would provide some sort of equitable voting process. Um, and like Counselor Kozinski, I, I would like to see this get passed. Um, and I'm trying to, I don't know the best way. All I have is our state rep saying, here we go. This is the process that I think that we should follow. So, uh, you know, I, 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 I'm sorry that I might be wrong in that, but I'm, I'm also making a decision that if we're wrong in the other way, then that also slows down a process. So I'm, I'm hoping that that, this gets us across the finish line.
Any other counsel? Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
J T Terrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez. J P Kozinski.
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Kozinski?
Uh, this concludes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, new business. Uh, we have new aior- aioral appointment, Counselor Riley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to make a motion to send, I am making a motion to send the following appointees, um, to the Appointment Committee. We have Bonnie McLeod to the Commission on Disability, Peter Follett to the East Hampton City Arts, Patricia Kuhn and Amelia Enright to the Main Street Cemetery, and James Johnson to the Veterans Council.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to send those five appointees to the Appointments Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Connie Denham. Aye. Omar Gomez.
Aye.
J P Kozinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Uh, J T Terrell.
Aye.
Motion passes. CPA supplemental appropriation, Counselor Peak?
Uh, alright, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, request is hereby made for, um, so I'm, uh, uh, sorry, I just opened the brain for, um, I would like to make a motion to send this.
First reading.
For the first reading, yes, 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 to send this to finance and then to set a public hearing for our next meeting, uh, once September.
Like, do your first reading first.
Okay. Request hereby made for the approval of following appropriation. Amount requested thirty-three thousand fifty-one dollars to be transferred from CPA Reserve for Open Space to be transferred to Lathrip Invasive Plant Removal. The amount requested will be used for the following purposes. The funding would be used to control invasive plants and remove existing invasive shrubs on Lathrip community land. Uh, also included is an expectation that Lathrip will provide education to the public about native invasive plant, invasive plants, and how landowners can support native wildlife. Lathrip is expected to provide quarterly reports and in-person updates twice a year.
You need a second.
Motion.
And, uh, we need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds, uh, to send to the Finance Committee the CPA supplemental appropriation of thirty-three thousand, uh, fifty-one dollar and to schedule a public hearing for the September fourth at six fifteen at this chamber. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Uh, Omar Gomez.
Aye.
J P Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Uh, J T Terrell.
Aye.
And Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, Counselor Denham?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. There are two zoning ordinance amendment proposals. Um, these are in the form of a motion. Uh, the first one is to amend the sign ordinance, section ten dot zero nine six B regarding temporary election signage to send to the ordinance committee.
Second. I have a motion and a seconds to send that item to the ordinance committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Uh, J P Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
He's not here.
Oh, sorry. J T Terrell.
Aye.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Connie Denham.
Aye.
And, uh, Omar Gomez.
Motion passes, Counselor Denham.
Great, uh, and this is, uh, also in the form of a motion to amend section eight dot five two B regarding the language verification by a surveyor to send to the ordinance committee.
Surveyor.
I have a motion and a seconds to send that item to the ordinance committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
J T Terrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez. J P Kozinski.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, we have one last new item, and it is a resolution that Counselor Denham and I, uh, bring forward to the council. I will ask to the council if everybody's okay to pass it tonight, if anyone is against it. Look, everybody's okay with it, um, Counselor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as we are, uh, as council and the community is aware, um, there was an article in, um, the shoestring, um, regarding, I guess, conditions of buildings at the, um, at Non-Duck Park. Um, and they're in, and as a result of that, there was an outcry of, um, public, um, support for the park, um, to address, um, the issues that are experiencing at the park. And so this is a resolution, uh, basically to affirm, um, the, uh, importance of community while also, um, affirming the rights and expectation of city employees to be able to, um, work in, um, safe conditions. Um, and so this is a, uh, resolution to address those two points.
I just wanna add, uh, a few things too.
Mm-hmm.
The first one is the, um, we, you know, as elected officials, uh, and I'm gonna talk in behalf of the council. It's important to recognize the hard work and the hard working of the employees of, of the park. Uh, they do a lot, uh, we, I can talk by myself. I can, I see them in the past, I see them, uh, recently, um, working. I know their hard work, I know how, why they do, and how hard it is for them to work in some conditions, uh, and dealing with, uh, with a lot of people on the park. Uh, and I recognize that they're doing a great job, uh, with the tools and everything that they have. Uh, it's important for the people to know that the council is, is a hundred per- percent support behind city employees. And when we talk about city employees, we talk about everybody. Every single employee is included in park and rec. And that's why Counselor Denham and I, we decided to bring this forward now and not put in the agenda for the next meeting and send it to the committee. I think we have to send a, a strong, strong message to the community that we are behind the city employees in all forms. And this resolution is, is a symbol of that. Anyone else before Counselor Terrell?
I, I just wanna say, uh, this is long overdue. Um, before I had the pleasure of being elected City Council, I was on the Parks and Rec Commission for a couple of years. Um, and then that the staff there is really unsung. They, they, they do a phenomenal job. Um, also, I have a lot of involvement with the staff through Little League in town also. And that they will do anything that is asked of them and even everything that's not asked of them. So I, I, like I said, I think this is long overdue and I strongly support this.
Thank you. Counselor Riley?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, look, so I obviously have no issues, um, with, uh, this resolution, but, um, I think the best way that we show support to the Parks and Recreation Department is not with a symbolic document that has no teeth behind it. Um, we can do that with actual money to rebuild a new structure for them. So, you know, fully in support of this, I'm gonna vote yes on the resolution, but this is not how we solve problems in our government. We do it by actually putting action, uh, behind our statements. So, you know, I'm committed to working with the mayor's office and with the, the Finance Committee to look at what it actually takes, uh, to get a new structure built for the Parks and Recreation Department, um, not to just emphasize that I think that it's something that we should do and then we don't actually follow through with it. So, you know, resolution and financing, uh, for a new structure, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riley. And by the way, we, I agree. Um, I think the resolution is just a message to send to everybody, including the mayor, that whatever, um, came in front of the council, that we, we are in favor of it, right? We, we're gonna be in favor of, uh, approving money for the park and, uh, for the employees. Um, I agree with you. This resolution don't resolve anything, but send a re- send a really clear message to the community and to the mayor and to the park and to the employees that we are in support and whatever came to the council, we are gonna support them too. Uh, Counselor Denham?
Thank you, sir. That, so, to be clear also, this is, is intended to be an expressed commitment to the Parks Department, to the Parks Commission, and to the mayor, um, that the council is committed to working with all of them to address the concerns, uh, of, uh, employees as well as the concerns that have been expressed by the community, the public, so.
Thank you. Any other counsel before we take the motion? Counselor Smith?
Um, I was wondering if the authors of the resolution could talk a little bit more about the changing demographics of the city. That was the one term that I just wanted a little more clarification on.
Counselor Denham?
Sure, yep, so I think changing demographics, I think that we have a large aging population within the community. We also have, um, demographics also in terms of activities that people are participating in. Um, those are changing, interests are changing. Um, we have kids who are playing, uh, in, in Little League, et cetera. Um, and so being, just being very mindful of the populations of people who are interested in, um, and what specifically they are interested in when they are looking for amenities within the parks.
Okay. Thanks, I wasn't sure.
Mm-hmm.
But obviously, as someone who studies aging, my hopes was changing demographics was the possibility of some, um, down the road, some updated equipment for, particularly for older folks. So, I just, thanks, I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Any other counsel before we take the motion? Counselor Denham?
Great, so this is a motion, um, in the form of a motion, the East Hampton Parks and Recreation Support Resolution. The East Hampton City Council recognizes that East Hampton Public Parks and Recreation Systems are dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for residents and visitors to our community through recreational programming, community building spaces, spaces, leisure activities, and conservation efforts. Whereas parks, amenities, recreation activities, and leisure experiences provide opportunities for young people to live, grow, and develop into contributing members of society, create lifelines and continuous life experience for older members of our community, generate opportunities for people to come together and experience a sense of community, and pay dividends to East Hampton by promoting physical, emotional, and mental health and well-being, generating revenue, attracting businesses and employment opportunities, and increasing housing value. Whereas abundant and accessible parks and open spaces are essential components of healthy and sustainable neighborhoods, and parks and recreation fac- facilities offer opportunities for physical activity, safe places for families and children, spaces for social interaction, access to nature, and places for mental respite. Whereas people who live within walking distance of a park or recreational facility are more likely to engage in physical activity. Whereas parks and open spaces provide people with access to nature which can provide, improve a psychological, social, emotional, and medical health and well-being. Whereas parks and open spaces provide aesthetic and environmental benefits such as urban cooling, storm water management, and carbon impulsion. such as urban cooling, storm water management and carbon and pollution sequence, sequestration, which can mitigate the impacts of pollution and global warming. Whereas it is necessary to acquire and develop new park and recreational facilities and amenities to serve the new diversifying residential population and to maintain the existing service level. Therefore be it resolved, the East Hampton City Council recognizes the changing demographics of the city and the recreational needs of community members. And it is committed to collaborating with the Parks and Recreation Committee to develop plans to expand amenities of the Parks Department in an effort to meet the needs of residents to support their efforts to build and strengthen their communities. Therefore be it resolved, the East Hampton City Council recognizes the hard work of personnel that, at, at the park and understands and supports a safe working environment to keep providing these important services to our residents and visitors. Be it further resolved, the East Hampton City Council fully supports efforts made by the mayor and the Parks and Recreation Department to ensure the safe working conditions of its employees and patrons of our parks.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to, um, adopt the East Hampton Park and Recreation Support Resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing on, Barbara?
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Tyrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez. JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, a second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, Barbara?
See, Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Tyrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Omar Gomez. JP Kozinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. See you, Brad.